Our first item of business, first I would like to mention that we have our three-person board tonight, so Mr. Rotalakis and Mr. Jerry are not present. First order of business is to approve minutes. We have minutes from September 2, 2021. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the minutes?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir. I have no questions either. I want to attain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented to us for the September 2, 2021 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item of business is to review and sign the bills. We have three bills. First one is for Graves Engineering Falcon Farms definitive plan review for $78. The second is for Graves Engineering 420 Boston Turnpike Site Plan Stormwater and Special Permit Review for $1,236. Third one is McMahon Associates for One Greenbrier Drive Traffic Review, a note 33.85% complete at $2,335.55 for a total of $3,649.55. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures as read by the chair.
By the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, that's going around. Board member comments. Mr. Rao, any comments for this month?
No comments this month.
I have a question. When is our next meeting?
June 2, I believe.
Mm-hmm. I have no further comments or questions.
Okay. I have no questions or comments, but Mr. Cahill, any questions or comments this month?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Our first hearing is a new public meeting. For Centec Park North Request for De Minimus Change NBP 3 Shrewsbury LLC, location 384 to 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good evening, Chair, and fellow members of the board. Bernie, can I set up on the...
Yep, you can plug right in there.
Could you just please state your name for the record?
So Devon Howe from Heels Associates, and here with me is Ryan Carroll from the ownership side of Northridge.
Very good. Thank you.
Thankfully, I got here just in time. There was a car crash on the Mass Pike. The second time it's happened to me on a way to a public hearing.
Sure.
And do the board members have a copy of our two letters that we've sent to Bernie? There was one that was dated in early April.
April 1st?
April 1st?
Yes. There was a second letter we actually issued today.
I don't believe we've gotten that one.
No.
I may not...
Oh, wait a minute.
Or did we?
No.
No, this is from Andy. This is from Andy.
I have copies.
Apologize if I missed it. Yeah, if you want to hand them out, that's fine. Thank you.
I don't have two of those.
I also want to note to members of the board that you have a memo or letter from the town engineer regarding his proposed changes this evening.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Thanks.
So I'll start with the first letter. Really, the reason why we're here tonight is we were requested by the town to come before the board to discuss some various changes that we've really been ongoing since we started construction a few months ago. The reason for the real majority of these changes is as the buildings went or underwent final design and, you know, final locations of the utilities inside the building, engineering studies, that's really what drove the majority of these changes. What I'd like to do, if that's okay with the chairs, is instead of going through, you know, each individual item, just give kind of the high-level overview of kind of what we've done.
Thank you.
So this is a view of the northerly side of the project. Like I said, as we were undergoing final design, we were shifting some of the parking spaces, the loading docks at the one of the faces of the building, and really that was just driven by the final architectural design. And as part of that final architectural design, they're finalizing the door locations. So we have to locate our ADA spaces, you know, the shortest distance to the doors. So those were shifting also, and really just kind of all the pieces falling into their final places. What we've also done is this wetland crossing here, if the board recalls, there was one wetland crossing on the project, and as part of the design of the retaining walls by a structural engineer, they needed some additional space on the westerly side of the retaining wall. And the reason why they needed that space was, if you recall, we had a sidewalk that connected the northerly side to the southerly side, and in order to get the guardrail in there in addition to the sidewalk, instead of having the guardrail, you know, located partially in the sidewalk, we took that road and shifted it over a foot and a half. Now, that did not change the impact from the project. The retaining walls stayed in the same location, same height, really no material change other than the road being right here, just shifting it over to allow for adequate space. Also, if the board recalls, when we were initially, before you last year, we discussed how we were going to have to be before Mass DOT and obtain a permit from them. And really what that meant is we didn't know how that driveway geometry would end up until we were, you know, fully engaged with them. We had meetings with them, I believe it was either just before or after we closed with this board, I think it was after. We thought we were okay with our driveway design. However, what they've actually requested, and we're still before the Mass DOT right now, is they've altered this entrance just to be much sharper into and out of the project site. Really, the purpose of that is there's no physical way a truck can turn left out of the site, and there's no possible way for a truck traveling eastbound along Hartford Turnpike to take a left into the site. I know that was, you know, a major concern of the town.
Yeah.
I think of some of the butters and consequently of Mass DOT as well. So that's the reason why we did that. Also, on the southerly side, what we've had to do, it's just part of the final electrical design, locating some of the transformers out there. There's a transformer right here. It serves the building as well as another one for the four electrical charging stations we had. We located that transformer right here. Limited clearing didn't change, just had to alter the grading slightly. I won't go too heavily into the, you know, the real minor changes we did with the drainage system. What we've done is just as we were designing the final system where, you know, we knew where the pipes come out of the building were located, we had to shift some manholes in just to value engineer the site, we shifted some other manholes as well. What we also did is, as one can expect right now, it's extremely difficult to get materials of any sort, really. It's not limited to just construction, but we originally had plastic chambers that we were proposing to use across the site, and just the cost of, it doesn't sound right, but cost of plastic was actually going above metal. I'm not sure where it is right now, but when we were trying to get these systems ordered to actually arrive on-site at the time, we actually switched these two metal pipe inside of the plastic chambers. It was actually, I think, much cheaper to go with that option. So we've replaced...
One second. So the metal change, did that have any impact at all?
On the stormwater? So they were required to get a stormwater permit. Mr. Truman, town engineer, let me know, and I believe it's in your letter as well, that the stormwater permit will be reviewed and they're asking for calculations from them, but their initial review didn't seem that there was going to be any impact.
Okay.
But as a matter of course, they're asking the calculations to be resubmitted. Mr. Vincent Tai, who works on engineering, will take a look at that as well. He helps oversee stormwater permits, but they didn't have any upfront concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, no, that's a great question. So we've, as Bernie said, been recently engaged with Andy, going to provide him updated calculations, like Bernie said, and the calculations show that, you know, we're maintaining our original design intent, and there's really, there's no material change to the stormwater system as it functions and, you know, releases stormwater to the wetlands as it does today.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to utilities, so we've been engaged with the DPW as part of the final design and coordination of the water main off South Street. And what we realized on the final design was that the, for the northern building, Building A, as we've previously called it, there wasn't enough fire flow to provide adequate or acceptable fire, you know, suppression in the building. So what we've had to do is the final design required a pump inside the building, and there's now a fire loop that supplies all the fire hydrants outside the building to make sure if there's, you know, a fire that it can be, you know, adequately suppressed with the system outside. That's been, like I said, that's been coordinated with the town of Shrewsbury Water Department. And it's just required some, you know, adding that fire loop and then some moving of pipes to make sure that the system functions with how the, you know, to be acceptable with the town as well as our fire engineers.
Quick question, Chair.
Sure.
Would our Shrewsbury Fire Department be looking at those numbers at all? Do they have to review or approve any of those?
No, because the hydrants are staying in the same location as they've previously been approved. It's just, it's making sure that they, you know, they have the flow that they need to actually put out a fire. As I said, I won't go too in-depth on this. It's just that, you know, the final design inside the building, trying to value engineer the site, you know, previous spots where we were showing, you know, the exit locations for the sewer, those have just been kind of shifted around to provide the shortest, cheapest route, and, you know, the less pipe you have, the less you have to worry about it. So just rerouting some of those to provide the shortest runs to the main in South Street and in Hartford Turnpike. That's really the main discussion I had on utilities. I handed out a letter earlier that's dated actually today, and I apologize for the short notice on this letter. We're trying to, right now, order the rain garden chambers that are located in this area here, right up near South Street. What we've realized since we sent our first letter to the town is if we were to order what's called the R tank system, it kind of just looked like milk crates, they actually wouldn't arrive until the project was complete. Obviously, that's just, that doesn't work for us. So that's the reason for that late change. We're proposing to swap out those chambers for what's known as Coltech. They're just arch plastic chambers, kind of, like I said, the kind of the price fluctuations between everything. That's what we found to be economical, and we found to work.
Functionally, it's going to achieve...
Functionally, it's going to be the same, and we're going to be in discussions with Andy just to, so the town can confirm it, make sure that they're, you know, acceptable with it as part of the stormwater permit.
Okay.
As far as the changes, that's really the, you know, the high-level view of the changes that we've made. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Any questions, Perna?
Again, the comments from our engineers say that these changes, some of these changes relating to CONCOM may need to be approved by them. Are you aware of that, and if it is, then you need to go to CONCOM on that?
Yeah, we're in discussions with Andy right now. Our opinion on these changes is that they're really, they're minor in nature. We believe they can be handled administratively, and the reason why I say that is just, you know, when we first got this project approved, there wasn't a final design inside the building. And just in the craziness of the world today, you know, trying to order materials for any project, I mean, this happens on really all the projects we deal with throughout the Commonwealth right now, is that it's a constant change of products just because of availability and cost right now.
Thank you. But Mr. Rao's point, the town engineer is suggesting that you at least notify conservation of the changes so that they can compare it against their order conditions to make sure you're all set. So as long as you're looking like you're going to do that...
That's why we're talking with Andy. I understand Brad's...
Because he's now on the conservation...
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Trump. He is the conservation staff now.
Yeah.
He's wearing two hats while we look for...
Brad, Brad, so Andy's picked that role up for now.
I found that out, I think, today that Andy was the acting conservation.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
No other questions.
Mr. Thomas?
I don't have any questions. Mr. Rao kind of answered the question I had, and everything else seemed to be de minimis in my opinion, so I'm okay with it otherwise.
All right. Yeah, this is a public meeting, so we're, if everyone is in agreement that this is looking pretty de minimis, I think we can make a recommendation that we can make a motion to approve these as de minimis changes.
I move that we approve the Centec Park North Request for De Minimus Change, 384 to 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business is continued public hearing.
It's not a public meeting. The phrase "continued" wasn't a public meeting. I think the public.
The public meeting is...
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing. A public meeting can sometimes have public comment. We felt that we didn't need to have public comment for these particular changes. So, thank you. The next item of business is a continued public hearing for One Greenbrier Road, Over 55 Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Cypress Avenue Development LLC. Location is One Greenbrier Road and 169 R Gulf Street. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Larry Rosenberg, Cypress Avenue Development Partners.
And I am John Grenier. I am the engineer who is...
John, do you want me to, I have the plans as well. Do you want me to put them on the screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Was that...
And as I did last time, I just brought...
So you can see everything on one sheet?
Okay.
Color overall, so you can make reference to that as well.
Thank you. Yeah.
And we also have elevation plans which were submitted.
I think we have those, John.
Yeah, we have the elevation plans.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Actually, if you got another one of those elevation ones that are reduced down?
Oh, sure.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Uh, sure.
So again, for the record, John Grenier, JM Grenier Associates. I can give a quick overview, and then I can get into some of the changes we've made based on comments from the board and staff. So this project, as you know, is located off of what will be a, was a recently approved cul-de-sac on Greenbrier Drive, which is on the easterly side of Cypress Ave. What we are proposing is to develop what is the rear portion of what is a combination of property at One Greenbrier Drive and 169 R Gulf Street, which is the piece that's further to the southerly portion of the developed piece. We are proposing a 66-unit, over-55-type condo development that it's a mix of duplex style and single-unit style condominiums. We have, you know, designed this, as we always do, to meet stormwater management regulations, to reduce the rate of runoff from the increased impervious areas and lawn areas from the existing condition. We, to get into some of the modifications we've made since our last meeting, we did meet with the deputy fire chief regarding what he would require and like for us for safe access into and throughout the site. It was one option that was brought up by one of the board members at the last hearing was potentially having a double-barrel entrance into the site. We did look at that. We talked to the deputy fire chief, and in his opinion, he would rather have a 24-foot-wide driving aisle so that, and it makes sense when we went through it, is if you have two separate driving aisles, one in, one out, if there is a car fire or somebody's broken down, you can't get around them. You're trapped, you're stuck. If you have a 24-foot-wide driving aisle, you can go around them, you can get past them, and you can get access into the site. So what we did was we modified the access from Greenbrier Drive. We have a 24-foot-wide driving aisle that comes in to, off of Greenbrier, into the middle portion of the site, and then we have a 22-foot-wide driving aisle that loops on the southerly side of the project, and then we have a 22-foot-wide access drive that accesses these 12 units over here. In addition to that, we provided the deputy fire chief with what's called an auto turn, which, with that software, what you can do is have a fire engine to town specs, and you can maneuver that through the site and make sure that you don't have any issues with radiuses of turns coming in and out of the site or turning around. We have, on the easterly side, we have a cul-de-sac located here, and we have a T-turnaround located in this area. So with those plans that we submitted for review to the deputy fire chief, he was, he was fine with the layout. It worked. He was satisfied that he has proper access in and out of the site with his emergency vehicles, including a large fire engine vehicle. The other items that we have addressed, there was concern from the board regarding having adequate overflow or visitor parking spaces. So what we did was, and this was actually also a concern of the deputy fire chief, because you don't want people going to visit somebody, they park on the shoulder of the road, now you're starting to block access around. So we have a total of 41 overflow visitor parking spaces that we spaced throughout the site. We have spaces located in front of the clubhouse. We have at this center portion where the intersection of this loop is, we have overflow parking here. At the rear portion of the loop, we have additional overflow parking, and then on this easterly side of the loop, we have additional parking located here, and over on this portion of these 12 units, we have another section of visitor overflow parking. So we spaced out the overflow parking throughout the site so that if someone's visiting somebody down here, they have a place adequately, not too far away, they can go and park here if they have, you know, if everybody's full. Not to mention, they are two-car garages, and they have two parking spaces in front of them. So just in perspective, the zoning requires one and a half parking spaces per unit, so per zoning, we'd be required to have 99 parking spaces between the garage parking, the two-car park, the parking for two cars in front, plus the overflow parking. We have a total of 305 total parking spaces. So we believe that we have more than adequate parking, and we adequately spaced it around the site, so that's not concentrated in any one spot. In addition to that...
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. I didn't want to stop John Blow.
Yes.
We don't have a quorum in the room anymore.
Okay, I...
So I wanted him to finish his spiel on parking first.
Please.
Now that he went through the parking, I just think it's the appropriate time to stop. I don't want you to stop while you're talking about like half the parking and then...
Okay.
You finish your thought. That's okay. I think we need to wait, though.
Thank you.
Yep.
Everybody take a water break.
Yeah. Yep. Do you want to call a two-minute recess? Do you want to call a two-minute recess, or?
Sure. Can we make a motion for a two-minute recess?
I move that we take a two-minute recess.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you vote on that without a quorum?
I know, right?
We did obviously provide additional plans back to Graves Engineering. We addressed some of their comments. I talked to Jeff Walsh a couple of days ago and he was hoping that they would get something back to the board before the meeting. I didn't see that come through, so I believe that they are kind of wrapping up their review. So, nothing really to report there. We're just waiting for their comments to come back based on our updated plans. One thing we did also add to the plan that was requested was where the... There's a septic system associated with this. There is no sewer. So, we did do our calculations of which way the sewer lines are going to flow to get to the septic areas. We did add that to the plan. That's on the utility plan. We obviously will be getting a permit for the septic design from the Board of Health, so we're going to be working with them to finalize the design of that. But we did show where the utilities were for the sewer and the septic tanks. And there's no conflicts with the drainage infrastructure. So, everything works in terms of infrastructure. And then we're going to be wrapping up the design on the septic field itself with the Board of Health. So, that's kind of a long and short of it. I'm sure you have questions and comments and would like to address them.
Sure. Well, it sticks in my mind. Water pressure, did you get an opportunity to review?
We haven't. I think the town, Bernie Crickman, was gonna send that.
Correct. So, Tate and Howard, the town peer reviewer for DPW, is working on it right now. They don't have the results yet. So, you'll have that hopefully, yeah, hopefully in the next week or so.
I'll have more questions, but I'm going to ask Mr. Rowe if he has any questions first.
Yeah, the last hearing, there were a lot of concerns expressed on the traffic parts. And even McMahon, the peer reviewer, wrote down a lot of these things. So, when you address those, the board would like to see that you address them very well, you know, because most of the concerns were traffic-related. Here, so make sure you address them both in terms of when the traffic counts were taken and if that truly represents the post-COVID or the current numbers to make sure that the analysis reflects the reality.
And I believe they did that.
Okay. That's one thing. On the septic issues, did you already have certain areas perked there that...
There were perk tests done throughout the site and deep holes. So, there are adequate soils. We have to do some holes. There were test holes that were done close to the location of the system, but we have to go back and do some directly within the area of the system. The way that the site has laid out, we are in a fill area, which means that we really don't have to worry about having issues with depth to groundwater because it's already in a fill area. We might have to add more sand once we strip it out. But, and from the other test pits that were done in those areas, there's good soil. So, we're not worried about it, but we just have to, again, do our due diligence on that.
Absolutely. Okay, good. You mentioned as part of your fire thing auto turn?
Yes.
I quite didn't understand what, but if you can please explain a little bit.
Yeah, it's a software where you can take electronically, or it's almost like a video game. You can have a model of an emergency vehicle, in this case, a fire engine, and you can track with your mouse, track the vehicle driving through the site, going around the loop, going into a cul-de-sac, driving around the cul-de-sac, doing like a three-point turn. So, we tracked that vehicle throughout the entire site. And when you do that, it shows you the path of the tires as they drive around the site. So, we did that analysis and we provided a PDF copy. We had provided the same plan that we had sent to the deputy fire chief. And he reviewed that. We exchanged some emails back and forth. And I think his comment in his email was, looks good. So.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, any questions?
I know we're ways out from... I know you're still working with conservation. I watched the last meeting. So, I think there's going to be a lot of changes to the site, or some changes to the site, just from what I saw at the meeting.
At the meeting, well, that was Brad's last meeting. He hadn't really looked at it. I did talk to Andy. Actually, no, Andy was at the last meeting. He hadn't, he's, you know, wearing multiple hats. He hadn't had a chance to look at it. We continued the last hearing and Andy said, "Yeah, I need time to look at it." I said, "Okay, once you do look at it, give me a call. I can come in, we can sit down, we can go through everything and make sure..."
I'm talking about, I watched the one that Brad was at.
Yeah, yeah. So, we continued the last one.
Right.
We had a conversation, emailed back and forth with Andy. He said he didn't have a chance to look at it. So, I said, "Once you do get a chance to look at it, give me a call and maybe I can come in, we can sit down and go through any questions or comments."
Okay. I feel as if you're a long way away there still?
I hope not.
I'm sure you don't. But just from watching the meeting, I got that feeling. You still have a ways to go there. So, there's not a really lot, in my view, to speak of right now because I think there's going to be changes just because of the way things are going to lay out with conservation. So, obviously, I still, you didn't address the... You addressed some of the other issues we had with the snow storage and things of that nature, but the density of the project in relation to the traffic, I don't see any change of that on here.
No. And these types of developments, we're clustering the units together at the center portion of the site. We're fairly isolated away from anything to the west of us. This is open space parcels that the town owns. To the west of us, to the south is another open space parcel. We do have some abutters on this section of Cypress. We're closer, and again, this is just our access drive. We're closer to grade with these two houses. So, we put a row of evergreens, a significant number of evergreens in this area. For the abutters on Redwood Lane, we're like 10... And again, we're just abutting with the driveway. We're 10 to 15 feet lower elevation-wise with the driveway. They're quite a ways up above us, so we're not going to have any issues with spill-off of lights. For our abutter to the east adjacent to where their house is, right up against the minimum yard setback in the zoning district, we're maintaining an 80-foot wooded buffer in this area. And then we have evergreens at this T-turnaround to make sure that there's no overspill if a vehicle were to turn adjacent to the turnaround. And any of the units are probably about 100-plus feet away from them. So, we're consolidating as much as we can into the center of the site. The zoning, as you know, allows for one unit for every 10,000 square feet. So, it's basically four per acre. Under, with the acreage that we have, we could, based on one unit for every 10,000 square feet, we could have like 160 units because we have a total of... Let me just take a look at my zoning chart. Yeah, the minimum area in square feet would be one unit for every 10,000 square feet, which would be 660,000 square feet. The total area of the site is 1,675,000 square feet. So, area-wise, we have an extra million square feet, which would be like another 100 units. So, zoning-wise, we're not anywhere near what we could do in terms of, based on the acreage. We did cluster everything together. And with the number of units we are providing, we have the ability to add a clubhouse if it was a much smaller style development. Then to have amenities like a clubhouse and other things, your condo fees would be...
Correct.
Would be too high.
I'm just trying to be transparent about my concerns.
Yeah, and I understand that. But relatively speaking, we think that we're fairly isolated back here. Unless you're pulling back there, nobody's even going to know that that development's there. We meet all of our setbacks between buildings to property lines. We more than exceed our setbacks. And we've clustered everything at the center portion of the site. So, we think it's, again, there's a huge housing need right now. Anything that goes on the market, it's gone. There's a huge demand for housing. We think that this is a good style project. It's, these aren't small, tiny units. They're going to be comfortable units. They're going to be higher-end units. If you look at the elevation plans, they're attractive. And from a town's perspective, these are going to be bringing in substantial tax revenues. You'll have units, I would anticipate that judging from other developments of this caliber in town, these are going to be probably worth, in terms of assessed values, in the mid-sixes. And it's going to be bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue. Never mind you have your excise taxes for all of the vehicles there. And there's really no output for town services. Any of the internal driveways, all privately maintained. Everything's private. If the water line breaks, it's a private water line. It needs to get fixed privately. There's really no, there's no drain on town resources. It's a big, tax-wise, a big win for the town. And I think it's something that is needed. The housing is, as you know, it's huge demand right now. So, we think that this is, would be a good addition to the town. I think it could be a good project. It's going to be an attractive project. So, and again, back to zoning, we're not even close to the density that could potentially be done. If we went with fourplexes, fiveplexes and jammed them all together, you could get more units. It wouldn't be as attractive. We have max duplexes. We tried to incorporate singles in there. So, again, to space things out. If we went with four, six-unit, you know, stuffed-in buildings that were smaller, we could get our unit numbers up, but it wouldn't be nearly as nice a project. I think this is an attractive product and a good project. So, just, that's my rebuttal.
There you go. Mr. Boulay.
So, as Mr. Thomas alluded to, I know that conservation was continued. And my opinion of what the first conservation hearing went, sounded like they had some significant issues with all the way from the roadway coming in to the crossing and all of that. So, I understand your apprehension of this is, we may not be really looking at what might end up coming through conservation. So, I think it is a little premature to think that this is a lot further along based on what I saw at the conservation. That's just my personal opinion. I do appreciate you increasing the visitor parking. I'm going to reiterate my big concerns of the two-to-one and three-to-one slopes, especially the lengths of them, given our recent history with slopes and certainly nothing to the magnitude that we're looking at here. That's a big concern of mine.
And not to interrupt, Bernie, is GZA, are they starting to look at the...
Yep, they've have the, they've begun their review of the slopes.
Okay.
Not crossing, just the slopes, you know.
So, I mean, but just in terms of the scale of it, right? I mean, if you look at, I mean, what's the length of the slope that kind of runs parallel to Cypress? That's got to be...
If I look at the road, if I look at the road stationing, 1900, the station, 1900 from station. Call 11, it's 800 feet?
What a guess.
Did you say that?
He said 800.
Oh, you're good.
So, that's a concern. And I know that was brought up at the conservation hearing as well. And I'm really concerned about the northern side where that three-to-one slope is, behind those six units in the center middle.
Talking about...
Oh, oh, this over here? Yes.
Wait, in this area?
Pretty big drop-off. Yeah, it's a small area with a huge drop-off.
Over, or this area?
Yeah, no, no, the first one, yeah. I think that's where the three-to-one slope is.
Yeah.
So, I'm concerned about the slopes. To be, you know, dead serious. And I agree. I understand that by the numbers, it looks like you can put a lot more in there. But the reality is wetlands and things of that nature would prevent you from doing that on a straight numbers calculation thing. So, but when you look, it still looks rather dense. And I understand, I can understand what you're saying as far as it's kind of away from everybody and, you know, you have a lot of interference with abutters and so forth. But it's still, it's pretty dense. The one other thing I wanted to mention, because I think it was brought up, you're looking for a waiver of fee and lieu, is that correct? If I remember correct?
On the affordables. No, no, we're looking to do the fee and lieu.
Yeah, fee and lieu. And given, should this continue at the scale that it is, I just want to be transparent with you. I'm not likely to be in favor of the fee and lieu for two reasons. One is, we're not taking the actions to actually build the affordable housing where those fees go. And this is such a large scale, and we're falling so far behind on affordable housing in the community. I personally, and the board can make their own decision, would stand on my ground that I've been, the last several years, of trying to avoid fee and lieu. But in this particular case with the scale of it, I would be not in favor of that, just so you know.
And the, and I think this might have been brought up in the discussion at our last hearing is the, with it being an over 55, the town wouldn't get credit for affordable units because it's age-restricted. And if you, if it's age-restricted, it doesn't count as being, I don't think...
I think you have it the opposite way around, is the affordable units can't be age-restricted, but they would count on the SHI.
Right, and if they are age-restricted, they don't count.
Correct.
Right.
But you can't age-restrict the affordable units.
You can't age-restrict the affordable, which then we have an over 55 that's...
Yeah, it gets to be a difficult proposition when you sell half a duplex to someone as an over 55 and they have a family with three kids playing in the driveway next to them. So, I mean, I...
I'll consider it some more, but...
Okay.
But issue...
I understand your concern.
I am not in favor, especially when you get into scales of projects. So, this is more for the future for you, John, on other projects that you may bring before us. But I'll review that and I'll get some guidance with town planner and so forth on where that falls. Okay? Like I said, I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions relative to conservation. And hopefully, you're going to have something presented for them for the next month and then...
Right, we do have plans into them. I know Andy's up to his eyeballs, so I didn't want to...
It's not just Andy. It's the conservation members had a lot of questions and concerns.
Right, right. So, but I want to go through those, any of the technical things, wetland-related with Andy. And we'll, you know, keep on marching down the road.
Any other questions or comments?
None right now, sir.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Rachel Missile, 23 Cypress. Just took down a couple of notes while listening. First of all, I want to thank you for your comments regarding affordable housing. Affordable housing is a matter of equity, not just a matter of requirement for the town. So, and there are people over 55 who would qualify for affordable housing. So, we don't have to call this a family unit. I think that's a really important thing and that's got to, you guys have to hold your line on that. I really appreciate your comments on that. So, with respect to the traffic, I'm a little confused. And I know this is a comment and not a question-and-answer session, but when you say that people are going to be turning right out of the development at 7:15 in the morning, when they turn right out of the development, they're going to go down to Gulf where all of the traffic is coming from to go up Cypress. There's still going to be a traffic issue there for the people who live in those units. It's not going to be an attractive thing for them. And I also don't know, because oftentimes, I don't know if Cypress was ever renamed to go all the way up to the high school. I know there was a measure to do that, but I don't know if it ever occurred. And so, I don't know if that affected your traffic study because the road up to the high school is considered a driveway, not a cut-through, or it used to be. And so, I don't know if that affects the assumption that people will be turning right instead of turning left because turning left is a cut-through that gets people to parts of Shrewsbury and Worcester that they would not take Gulf to go to. And then the other thing, I know you're talking about building evergreens to create a buffer for the houses on Cypress. And you were talking about the driveway and headlights not being an issue for people. But I do believe that the lights on houses, particularly for the house on Redwood, I think those lights are going to shine right into his home. I could be wrong, and I see you shaking your head. And I'm totally okay with being wrong about that, but I just want that to be considered because if you're talking about evergreens, those, if that's what's going to be blocking those lights, you just need to make sure that they're big enough that those houses are protected. Again, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I don't have an issue with people building on this land. I want it to be done responsibly. I don't want these places to dwarf the houses that are already on Cypress and make them look like dumps. And I also am very concerned about the wetlands. And again, I appreciate your comments about technically being able to build 160 units, but realistically, that's not possible there. So, we need to take that into consideration when we're thinking about the density of this project because you took two lots, put them together, and said, "Now, we have the ability to build lots more units on this and we put something really dense here." And that's not in the spirit of what we're really supposed to be thinking about with this project. So, my thoughts, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes.
Sue Sesney, I'm at 11th Cypress. I'm close to where the cul-de-sac is coming onto the property. In terms of the density of the, of what's going in there, if you look at the number of houses that are on Cypress from Gulf Street to the high school, considering all the houses there, including the cul-de-sac on Redwood Drive, the houses that have their backyards that face Cypress, we're talking 37. And here, we're talking about putting 66 in an area that's a lot smaller than that. So, it is in contrast to the neighborhood. And being in that part of Cypress as well, people do go up to the high school, but they don't all stay there. They drop their kids off, then they turn around and they fly right back down. You have buses that drop everyone off and they come zipping right down. I don't leave my house at that hour. It's difficult to get out of my driveway and onto Cypress Ave. So, that's...
Thank you. I know that our traffic peers, the peer reviewer for our traffic still has not replied to their responses to their initial traffic studies.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might, so June 2nd is, that's going to be our traffic day, if you will. So, we're going to have the board's peer reviewer here for traffic and we'll have the developer's traffic engineer as well. So, that is a great time to bring traffic questions because we'll have both engineers being able to speak to each other and to comments from the public.
Okay.
So, that is, that's a great time to come back for traffic questions.
And the only other issue is, when I moved in there, I had asked about the land behind my house. I knew it was privately owned. And I knew when the person passed away, the land would be sold and it would be developed. But there's a big difference between having someone's backyard abutting my property and a driveway that's going to have everyone, all those houses that live up there, the 100, well, the 66, two, everyone has two cars, two people living there. As the gentleman said, every three minutes, a car is going to be coming right in my backyard. I have the cars in the front and now I have the cars in the back. And it's a big difference having a driveway going by that every car in that development is going to go by versus somebody's backyard.
Oh, I understand. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing for One Greenbrier Road, over 55 housing development, site plan approval and special permit to our June 2nd, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing is for, it's a continued public hearing for a proposed collision center, site plan approval for 800 Boston Turnpike LLC, location 420 Boston Turnpike. I believe we have a letter for a request for continuance, Mr. Cahill?
Yes, we have received a request to continue to the June 2nd meeting.
Does anyone have any questions or comments relative to the request for continuance?
No questions.
No, sir. Entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing for 800 Boston Turnpike LLC, MAGRE Holdings, 420 Boston Turnpike, to June 2nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to our next public hearing, which is continued public hearing for zoning warrant articles, Town Annual Meeting 2022. This one, we'll discuss articles numbers 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Mr. Cahill?
Yes, just to remind the board, so this evening is a vote. Anyone watching at home who doesn't remember, planning board does not actually adopt zoning. It recommends zoning changes to town meeting. It's town meeting who votes to approve changes. That town meeting is in just a couple of weeks on the 21st. And so, tonight is the final chance for the public hearing to get feedback, your feedback, and also, of course, to vote on a recommendation, yea or nay. Just, I promise I'll be brief. Article 30, just a reminder, this is the changes to continuance of existing uses. In their state statute, in the last few years, has been a few changes for protections to single and two-family houses. So, these changes are to bring up our zoning bylaws into conformance with state statute. And again, just very quickly to go over it, the following things would no longer require a special permit with the zoning board of appeals. So firstly, changes to a structure that is conforming but is on a non-conforming lot, so it's maybe the lot size, the lot frontage, does no longer require a special permit. The next one is if there is a non-conforming structure, so say your front yard isn't conforming the setback, but you're putting an addition on the back, like, you know, bedroom or a living room or something, and that is, and the addition is... living room or something, and that is, and the addition is entirely conforming, no longer requires a special permit from the ZBA. The second one is, we call it the replace, the like-for-like replacement one. So, if you have a 12-by-12 deck, this is my favorite example because it's very easy, 12-by-12 deck on the side yard, and it doesn't meet the side yard setback, and it's in disrepair, and you're just gonna replace it with the same footprint, 12-by-12 deck, just maybe new material, what have you, no special permit. And then finally, it's the demolition one, is if you have a part of a structure, single or two-family only, that does not conform to a setback, you're demolishing part of it, still doesn't conform, but it's not more non-conforming, doesn't require a special permit. So, those are kind of the four big ones, and that's what, well, they are the only four big ones, really. Article 30 is about. Article 31 is, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, I'll just go through them and then you can have your votes.
Go ahead, have a look.
Is the, for a new requirement or a new, under site plan approval, something that will be required for have site plan approval by the planning board, this board would be the disturbing or creating any slope with a grade of two to one, speaking of slopes this evening, 50% are steeper, and a height of 10 feet or greater. There was a discussion for Mr. Jerry last time about what disturb means. We do have a, I had a definition of disturb. Uh, if I still have it, I do. Uh, I thought, just for Mr. Jerry, I'll read it out. Of course, he's not here. So, pretty much, so the, the definition of disturb, I spoke with DPW, there is a definition for the stormwater bylaw already, which we would rely on, and that's any action that causes a change in the position, location, or arrangement of soil, sand, rock, gravel, or similar earth material. So, this definition is already in effect for our stormwater bylaw and is enforced through the DPW. So, it is a standing definition in town. Then the next, any questions, sorry, I should probably go in too fast. Any questions about any of these so far?
None whatsoever.
Okay. I don't mean to go so fast. Please stop me if I'm going too quickly. Article 32 is to provide, the proposal is to provide the town clerk with the power to fix incorrect numbering and lettering in the zoning bylaw. So, simple as that. If she sees something in the table of contents that says, "Go to page 60 for site plan approval," and you go to page 60, it's not there, it's on page 72, she can change the table of contents to match where it actually is, or if something else is out of order. And this would have to run, be run by the town council for consultation, and the town clerk would have to keep track of it, days and times, and when it was changed, and so on.
Okay.
The next one is Article 33, common driveways. You can see a few changes here that are being proposed. Really, the substantive change, though, here is that for residential common driveways only, there would be no change in the maximum number of lots. That would stay at three. However, this would introduce a maximum number of units. So, you could have three lots on a common driveway, one with a duplex and two with single-family houses. That would be okay, but you couldn't add another duplex to that. It would be maximum four units total, which would be, well, as we just discussed this evening, approximately two cars. If you have a teenager, three cars in each driveway using that 18-foot common driveway. So, that is the substance of this one. And then, finally, is the introducing, so Article 34 is to remove the requirement for a five-foot grass strip between industrial uses and industrial lots in the limited industrial zoning district. Simply, we're not seeing that there's much purpose to it if it's between, say, a manufacturing lot and a distribution lot. The need for having a, the buffer is kind of not really there. And a lot of them don't have it anyways, and to try to enforce it now retroactively is gonna be challenging, to say the least, through enforcement. And then, so I'll leave it there, Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the next one, and then I'll introduce
Yep.
Our guests this evening. So-
There's a separate hearing for that one anyways.
Yes, correct. So-
So, before we go any further.
We'll pause at this one.
Any questions or comments from the board relative to any of the zoning articles?
I have none, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present that has any questions relative to zoning articles 30 through 34? Not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion. We'll do these one at a time, Jay, okay?
Uh, how exactly do we wanna word?
We're gonna recommend approvals.
Make a motion to recommend Article 30. Is, and then, Steve, ask, is there a second?
Okay. I move that we recommend Article 30 to add to the warrant articles for the town meeting for 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's, you're not adding it to the warrant. It's already on the warrant.
You're recommending approval.
Okay, okay. Do we want me to reword that one?
If you want to.
Please, please.
I recommend approval for Article 30 to the annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we recommend Article 31 to the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move that we recommend Article 32 to the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we recommend Article 33 to the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we recommend Article 34 to the town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is a new public hearing for a zoning warrant article, Annual Town Meeting 2022, Article 35. It's for Section 7, Table 2, and Section 4, Table 1, Use Regulation Schedule, Footnote 12, Building Height in Limited Industrial Zoning District.
Jay, before you read that, can you just hand this to Steve?
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Cahill, you want to?
Uh, legal note. That's for you to sign.
That's for you to sign. Oh, my apologies. Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will be in, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Sleckman's Meeting Room at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw as follows. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 7, Table 2, and Section 6, Table 1, Use Regulation Schedule, Footnote 12, by inserting text to allow a building height greater than 50 feet to 75 feet by special permit in a limited industrial zoning district and to allow for loading and unloading at the front of a building by special permit in the limited industrial district, or take any other action in relation thereto. The complete text, where applicable, may be seen during regular business hours in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department, the office of the town clerk, and municipal office building at 100 Maple Avenue, the Shrewsbury Public Library at 609 Main Street, or online at HTTPS, colon, backslash, backslash, shrewsbury dot, shrewsburyma.gov/284/planningboard.
Thomas?
The applicant, please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of GFI Partners. And with me this evening to explain the reasoning behind Article 35 is Haley Palazola and Jaclyn Bart, both of GFI Partners. This article relates solely to limited industrial property. It, it might be worth seeing the zoning map so you can see, get a context of the property so that you can recall where it is. So, it is, I guess by my eyes, the lavender pieces that you can see, really clustered in a couple of different air parts of town. And in the interest of full disclosure, GFI Partners owns four different tracts of land in Shrewsbury that are in the limited industrial zone. What we seek to do, only by special permit, because of this relief of going from 50 feet to 75 feet, would not be appropriate in all parts of the limited industrial, is to have the ability to come to your board, the planning board, and seek a special permit to go up to 75 feet, and allow you to judge based upon the, the precise conditions presented, the topography, the proximate nature to other receptors such as residential properties or view sheds and the like, to determine if it makes some sense. Similarly, we seek to be able to have a special permit in order to change a standard that is in the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, that all loading must be done in the rear. And that makes good sense in many cases, but there are cases in which it does not make sense. GFI knows particularly, because we recently went to the zoning board of appeals at 440 Hartford Turnpike and received a variance in order to be able to do loading in the front, and the reason there was because the building itself acted as a buffer to a nearby residential property. And it would be easier, obviously, and more efficient to be able to do it by special permit in conjunction with the site plan that you're doing here. Why 50 feet to 75 feet for this industry is something that GFI's got a great deal of insight, given its experience throughout the Northeast and other parts of the country, as far as where this market is going, the limited industrial space, which tends to be warehouse and distribution space, research and development, or related to either electronics or bio farmer, and those particular uses. So, I'm gonna suggest that either Haley or, or Jackie can kind of give you some of the, what they're seeing in the marketplace. We can just give you some idea of what we're seeing in other communities, and then try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Donahue. Chair, the board members, thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Haley Palazola, and I'm with, joined by my colleague, Jaclyn Bart here, of 160 Holden Street LLC, which is an affiliate of GFI Partners, landowner and petitioner of Article 35 at this year's annual town meeting. If you recall, GFI Partners in 2020 petitioned the town for a zone change of a large tract of land on Route 70 from commercial business to the limited industrial district. Since then, GFI has invested significant time and money into the Worcester Sand property in order to prepare it, to bring it back to its highest and best views. I wanted to take this evening to provide a quick presentation, I promise we'll be quick, with the purpose and the goals of Article 35. As Attorney Donahue stated, Article 35 would amend the town's limited industrial zoning bylaws to allow for a building height greater than 50 feet to 75 feet with a special permit, and allow for unloading and loading in the front of the building with a special permit. Additionally, as, as Attorney Donahue already stated, allowed uses in this zone include warehousing and distribution, partial distribution centers, and research and development. Majority of the limited industrial district can be found in four concentrations of the town, which we saw in the zoning map, Route 20, Hartford Turnpike, Route 70, Centec Boulevard, and Route 9. And this is no surprise because the warehouse users, it's important for them to be at the proximity to highway and major thoroughfares. So, next, I just wanted to provide a brief overview on who GFI is. We're a local real estate developer. For the past 30 years, probably developed over 17 million square feet of commercial space and actively permitting about 6 million square feet of industrial space across the region, including, we own the 200 acres that Attorney Donahue mentioned in Shrewsbury. So, we're very bullish on Shrewsbury. So, this, this next slide, I just wanted to show you numerous examples of, of projects, Class A industrial projects that GFI is either currently permitting or currently constructing in the marketplace. All of these facilities were designed on a speculative basis without a tenant in hand. Due to the increasing demand in the marketplace for, for space, the biggest two questions that we get from our tenants is the speed to delivery, how fast can you deliver the space, and B, can you meet our requirements and, and the, the building specifications that are constantly changing due to technology and modernization. So, the, the, you know, the biggest things are centered around clear height, loading doors, and parking. So, clear height, for those who, who aren't familiar with that kind of industry term, is the usable space from the finished floor to the roof below Joyce Lights and fire suppression sprinklers, in which they can store their racking and products. With the rise of e-commerce and east, increased focus on supply chain optimization, we're seeing Class A warehouse clear heights rising quickly. In the 90s, the standard was approximately 25 feet. 10 years later, 2010, the standard was 32 feet, and in the last decade, the standard is a minimum of 36 clear with a preference for 40. And most recently, we're seeing even higher requirements depending on the different users in the marketplace and, and what they're storing inside. On the next slide, you know, I can confirm that Shrewsbury is not the only town to consider this modernization of the industrial zoning district. Municipally, municipalities, excuse me, across the, the Commonwealth are making amendments to building height. Firsthand experience, GFI Partners worked with the town of Charlton last year to increase the height from 50 feet to 75 feet with a special permit in the industrial general district. Similar to that, that same, same town meeting, another applicant proposed to increase a building height from 50 to 110 with special permit in the Business Enterprise Park zoning. And not far behind was Carver, Uxbridge, and Douglas, which also modified their industrial zoning bylaws for this, you know, changing market that we're in. I just wanted to highlight that the town of Charlton is, is a good one because with these two zoning amendments, the town was able to kind of revitalize the Route 20 corridor, and with these two proposed projects that were able to be approved and move forward, will generate approximately $3 million in annual tax revenue, reoccurring tax revenue for the town of Charlton. So, you can imagine that they're, they're pretty happy with the, you know, the success of those passings. So, on this, this next slide, because we've talked a lot about clear height so far, I wanted to just differentiate the differences in, in loading that we're seeing. So, a traditional warehouse is single-loaded with receiving and shipping on the same side of the building. Now, there's a much bigger purse and large-scale warehouse facilities for a cross-dock, which allows for unloading and loading on opposite sides of the facility, and that's to increase efficiency. Now, I just wanted to be clear, that is way different from a truck terminal, which has fast thorough print in and out on a narrow warehouse building. That's a little bit different than what we're seeing here with, on this cross-dock facility. So, in this next slide, I just wanted to kind of show you a cool picture because today's supply chains are getting increasingly complex and the need to accommodate extra space through multiple supply chain processes under the same roof. So, these warehouses are actually operating mini warehouses inside the one facility. So, you have, you know, pianos and patio furniture coming into one area where you have the smaller electronics and sort materials on the other side of the facility. You have packing and sorting, racking on one side with, you know, automated conveyor systems. So, it's, it's quite the operation inside these warehouses, which is, kind of explains why when we're designing these spec warehouses, when we don't have an ultimate end user in place, you know, you, you try to maximize efficiency and plan for flexibility. So, we put in as many loading docks as we can on each side. We, we, we try to allow, you know, us to go higher if needed, or, or sometimes, you know, it stays right at 40-foot clear. It is the new standard, as I mentioned. It's important to note, just for the public's sake, which, which you obviously know, that the approval of, of Article 35 does not approve any one project. Instead, it gives the planning board, you, the authority to determine on a case-by-case basis if it is meant for a specific project location. The same decisions that you are already making as part of the site plan approval process, where you're looking at setbacks, lighting, traffic, and noise. So, it's really up to you if it makes sense for the project. You know, just, just as a closing, I think in our experience, these properly located and comprehensively planned developments, modern industrial properties add significant contributions to the town as, as far as tax, tax revenue, you know, upwards of, of a million dollars in annual tax revenue, as well as significant jobs for the town, with very little impacts on the town's resources, schools, and fire and, and police services, while also allowing, you know, this, this flexibility to attract these Class A users to Shrewsbury. Because if the bylaws are, are not flexible in nature, the tenants will go somewhere else. And so, that's really what we're here for, is we want to be able to respond to these requirements that are in the marketplace and give the decision to the planning board to make the, the ultimate determination. So, thank you very much for the time. I'll happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Rowe, any questions?
Uh, no questions, probably.
No questions.
No, I, I think it's, given the flexibility and as you presented, you know, it doesn't mean that it's going to be there. And I think every project, depending on where it is located within that particular district, will certainly play a role, we will play a role in understanding whether or not, no, that's not gonna happen here or, or, or not. So, I, I, I think the flexibility is something that's important. It's certainly putting my Tom-
Certainly, putting my town meeting hat on, you know, having revenue is always, you know, a prime target that we're looking for, we tend to spend more than we can bring in in some cases, so we want to keep that in mind. So I personally don't have any issues with this particular request, this, and if there's no other questions.
I have no question.
It is a, excuse me, it is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? This is how they usually look towards the end of the night, by the way. Seeing no public interest, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on zoning warrant article number 35.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments relative to making a recommendation for this article?
I have none. I.
I'm, I'm in favor, so.
I move that we approve.
Recommend.
Recommend the article, Article 35 be brought in front of town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
So you get to present again in front of hot town meetings.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
That's number 35. We have no more public hearings. First item of new business is to discuss, initiate the bond for Three Commerce Road. I have a bond here for $10,090.50. Is there any questions or comments relative to the bond, Mr. Cahill?
None, this was approved back in December, so they're a little behind on getting it to us, but they have got it to us now, so we have the, we have the funds for it, so we're issuing the bond this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No questions, Mr. Jay.
Okay. Entertain a motion to accept the bond?
I move that we accept the bond for Three Commerce Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to sign this? Do we all have?
All, all three of you, yes, please. Mr. Chairman, you want me to explain the next one?
Yes, please.
So the next one is, it is a new tri-party agreement, based on a few other tri-party agreements for Summit Ridge Estates definitive subdivision, which dates back to 2004 or 5. This is for the release of three lots, so the surety is, we need the surety and able, an order for the board to release the three lots, and I believe you have the lot numbers on there, Mr. Chairman.
Nine, 10, and 11.
Correct. So it would be a vote to accept the surety and to release those lots.
Okay, and I did note, see that there's also on that?
Yes.
With lots nine, 10, and 11, that we would like to put in a completion date?
Yes.
To, to kind of put a little bit of pressure on the developer to get this thing completed. We had an earlier discussion, does five years seem reasonable? I feel five years is, Mr. Thomas?
I hope so, it'd be five years for three lots.
Yeah, five years from?
From today.
From, okay, yeah.
Okay, and this would be for lots nine, 10, and 11. Is there any questions or comments from the board about this?
No questions, Chairman.
Entertain a motion to.
Accept the surety?
Accept the release of the covenant, right?
Uh, release of those lots.
Release of the lots.
An acceptance of the surety.
I vote that we release lots nine through 11 at Summit Ridge Estates and agree on the surety? Approve it?
Endorse.
Endorse it?
Sure.
Endorse it for five years?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then C, Mr. Chairman, is not required to be public hearings, but these are, this already came to the board once as part of the process, it comes back for the final time. It has gone through engineering, we've received notice that there is no more outstanding issues for Commerce Road or Lake Street, and engineering is recommending that, the board also recommend, so this is going to be similar to the zoning articles, recommend, I guess you'd say, the layout as public roads, the following.
That's for both Commerce Road and?
And Lake Street. You can do individual votes.
Okay.
In fact, I recommend it.
I vote that we recommend the layout for Commerce Road.
Can I, I'm just going to ask it, instead of say that, can you, I make a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend the layout for Commerce Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll do the same for Lake Street.
I make a motion that we recommend the layout for Lake Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Okay, these can go with that, too. Okay.
Thank you.
You.
Right, that's, looks like that's everything that's on the agenda. So I made, entertain a motion that I adjourned.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.